Okay, good evening. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Work Session Meeting of February 11th, 2021 was convened in the Media Center of Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Garside Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting for time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please rise for a flag salute in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a mover to reconvene? Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Share? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Moffett?
Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mr. Pavlik?
Here.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
Mrs. Share?
Here.
And I see Mr. Bubba?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Dr. Toback?
Okay, so good evening, everybody. We're very excited to share that we're moving ahead with our plans to reopen our schools for in-person instruction. We look forward to seeing our students and teachers return next Tuesday, February 16th. In a few moments, we'll talk more about the specifics of the plan. But at this point, I'd like to discuss a little bit more about what we can expect. While it is exciting to think about our students and staff returning, there is a reality that we must face when opening our school system during a pandemic. We must prepare for some setbacks. The reason why I mention this possibility is because of our recent experiences with students testing positive for COVID. In addition to the new cases reported yesterday from January 11th until February 8th, there were 199 reported cases of our students quarantined as a result of exposure to COVID-19. This number reflects our total school population during the same time period. There were 95 students quarantined under the same guidance of the Department of Health while either participating in athletics or activities. So just a quick summary, knowing that actions taken by the district have a number of students involved. On the 11th of January, our girls varsity basketball team wound up in quarantine. One of the students was quarantined due to close contact. The girls fencing team in Wayne Valley on the 13th of January wound up with 13 students and two coaches being quarantined. On the 15th of January, the girls fencing team in Rain Falls was quarantined, 15 students and one coach. On the 24th of January, the JV ice hockey team, the girls high schools, wound up with one student being quarantined through the close contact. Our spring musical at Wayne Ballard on the 27th of January stopped practicing while three students quarantined. On the 31st of January, the JV ice hockey team, once again, wound up being quarantined. In this case, 16 students that were quarantining after one of those players was positive. On the 2nd of February, the varsity basketball team in Wayne Valley was positive. Each student was positive from another team and these students were quarantined. On the 4th of February, the Wayne Valley varsity basketball team wound up with nine students being quarantined as a result of a student from another team being positive. On the 4th of January, the Wayne Valley, the students at Wayne Valley who were involved in a non-district sponsored baseball program wound up being quarantined. Eight of them were quarantined as a result of one student being positive. And then on the 6th of February, the varsity ice hockey team, once again, wound up being quarantined. Now, at this point, there were 18 students that were quarantined. Add it together, it's 95 school students that have been quarantined since the beginning of January. So my intent is not to frighten you, but rather recognize that COVID still has a significant presence in our school community. The good news is that when it comes to sports, even though there were numerous exposures, there had been no additional cases directly linked to those exposures up to this point. This is most likely due to factors that happen while following proper procedures, keeping their social distance and wearing their masks. This suggests also that the students are contracting COVID from external sources, not in school, which is cause for concern as each of our school communities comes back together. With Board of Ed approval, the district will be moving ahead with a number of actions to better insulate the school district against some of the staffing problems we faced in December. So we're coming back to school in a much better position. The administration completed a thorough survey of all of our subs, and the news was not good, that we learned that only 25% of our already reduced substitute pool was willing to work as we reopen on February 16th. Also, they, in the survey, many of the subs indicated that they were not returning to work, largely due to concerns about COVID. However, we also went on a social media campaign and an advertising campaign to attract some additional subs. So there is good news, and you can see under emergent item T2 that we are recommending the appointment of 19 new subs. Also, emergent item T5 is a recommendation to hire an additional nine permanent subs. Permanent subs are very important due to the fact that they report to Wayne every day and provide tremendous stability at each of our schools. In addition, emergent item T10 is a recommendation to revise our rate for permanent and daily subs. With Board approval, the rate for permanent subs is moving from $150 a day to $225 a day, and the rate for daily subs is moving from $150 a day to $200 a day. This is effective from February 12th through April 8th. April 8th is the date of our new, our next board meeting, and we can evaluate the effectiveness of these new rates in attracting subs. Also, in addition to the subs, I know many people from the community are stepping up at this point to work as substitutes in the district, which is wonderful news. So people have taken action to become certified as substitutes. We also need cafeteria and playground aides. So we'll be advertising for cafeteria and playground aides. These are very nice positions, and these are nice opportunities, but we do need help. So we will need additional cafeteria and playground aides as we look at different options for returning for a full day. The administration believes that this will be an important step in attracting the additional subs, going back to the topic of the $200 a day rate. Currently, other districts are looking to expand in-person instruction. PCTI is already paying $200 a day for subs, and they're going back to school. They were remote, and now they're returning as well. With this daily, while this daily rate is higher when compared to other communities, we are facing a situation where there is great demand for substitutes in all of our local communities. At this point, teachers are not eligible in New Jersey for the COVID vaccine, which is another factor we consider. Okay, finally, emergent item R2 is the resolution for the Phase 4 Return to School Plan. In order to provide the public with advance notice of this plan, the presentation this evening was shared with the public on Tuesday, February 9th. So what I'd like to do is we're going to bounce a little bit around, and what I'd like to do is go to our presentation. So Dr. Bouchard, can you please pull up our first presentation, the Return to School Phase 4 Plan? Ms. Reichman will be joining me tonight to discuss this plan and to also add some of her insights. So let's get to it. If you go to the next page, right, rather than waiting, we've decided, here it is. Okay? So this is our full return to school progression. So notice it's a progression. The idea is that you crawl before you can walk, you walk before you run. And so eventually, we'll make our way into April, and we'll go to another phase probably in May. But we, in the meantime, we're starting on February 16th with Phase 4, which is the prior hybrid schedule that we've been following, including virtual Wednesday. It includes cohorts, so essentially the same schedule that we had when we left in December. If you look ahead, March 1st, just a few weeks away, we maintain our current hybrid schedule, which means the bell schedule during the day remains the same. It means it's a shortened day, but it is five days per week. So now we'll eliminate the virtual Wednesday. You could see then that we have a spring break, and then after that, we have April 19th. That is the day we have targeted for Phase 5. That is a full return. That's with lunch served, that's with AB and cohorts. And, but by law, at this point, the virtual option remains. So there is no getting away from that. However, there's a lot of things to consider. April 19th is a long way away. So there's different considerations by grade level. There's concerns about screen time. There's concerns about supervision and staffing. Like I mentioned, the cafeteria and playground aides and how many we will need. And there's also other options that may emerge. So at this point, we are working in this progression towards a return and having a full day of school in April, which is a very exciting thing. And hopefully, we don't have any setbacks that prevents that from happening. But right now, we're on target. We have a lot to be excited about, and we're moving ahead. If we can go, Dr. Bouchard, to the next page? Okay? I'd like to give you a quick COVID update. So now is a great time to return to school. And the reason it's a great time is because the situation that we're facing now is similar to what it was in December, or I'm sorry, November, when it comes to COVID cases. And so if you look at the X at the very top, the purple X, that is the date of our, that represents the January 14th Board of Ed meeting, where a determination was made that we would continue with remote instruction. But as you can see, that was the high point in the pandemic. If you look back at the next X below that, that was mid-December. That's the time when we wound up shutting down. And then if you look to the right, there is a line drawn. That is about, that circle on the right represents where we are today. And if you draw a line directly left, that is why I make the assertion that we're about at the risk level and the amount of cases, new cases, as we were in mid to early November. So, and you could see the numbers continue to go downward. And so that is a positive trend that really speaks to the need to return to school in person. Next slide, please. Okay. So this is something that we also review at every one of our board meetings. We thought we would just basically focus on the situation as it evolved from January 11th to January 14th. And this slide is important because on the right-hand side, under the chart for January 14th, you could see positive staff and quarantining staff, okay? And the numbers far to the right are 20 and 32. You could see above that, that you have positive staff and quarantining staff, 15 and 18, okay? So this basically goes back to this timeline and shows that part of the reason why we wound up remaining remote is because we went from 33 to 52 situations where we had staff members either positive or quarantining. And this is important in illustrating the need for substitutes. In other words, we can handle the 60 or so people that have 504 accommodations. We can handle the additional 30, 35 people that are out every day for various reasons, like illness, or if there is a personal day or some other reason they have to be out. We also handle the replacements for maternity leave and all the other absences that we have. But then when you go and you add an additional 50 to the scenario, and you do that in rapid fashion, that is the type of thing that causes us to shut down. And so I just wanted to point that out to the community because it is important to understand some of the reasons behind what happened and also to understand the staffing issues. Really, the great weakness that we have is when the quarantine cases go up for staff, and we also have additional positive staff members. We wind up in a situation where we don't have enough people to cover that. And as you can see, that number can go very rapidly. If you can go to the next slide. So here you have great news, right? February 8th, positive staff, quarantining staff, four and eight. Now, our student numbers have been going up. I reported that. So we do have some issues with the increased number of students, but also with quarantining. So, but overall, we're in a great position in terms of staffing. That was one of the big issues we talked about previously, was our staffing situation. But right now, we're in great shape. If you can go to the next slide, please, Dr. Bouchard? Okay, so this is our local Department of Health. Okay, so you can see the WDOH represents the Wayne Department of Health, and you can see our cases versus the cases that they have on file for each of these days. And you can see, more importantly, on the right-hand side, a very positive trend for both the community and for the school district. So that's exciting news. That really also speaks to the idea that it's a great time to return to school. If you can go to the next slide? Or is that it? That's the end of the road, okay? Ms. Reichman, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
I wanted to thank, there were so many parents who wrote us, you know, commented many after last year. Some people said they had to drop off at a certain time.
Please know that all of your comments, your emails, your concerns, everything is considered.
Frequently, and sometimes it's impossible to receive the next day because we're working on contracting answers to the needs of everyone and just considering all the possibilities. But again, know that tonight's an opportunity for us to share out as many answers as we can, and we look forward to providing that information.
Okay. So we're going to do things a little bit differently this evening. As Mrs. Reichman said, we're definitely going to continue to answer questions from the public. But in this case, we're going to do something, this is the part that's a little bit out of order. We're going to answer questions from the public that have been asked in advance of public comment. How is that possible? It's possible because we monitor social media. We receive all these emails that Mrs. Reichman just spoke about. We see text messages, different things that people have been asking about. So we've been collecting all of these questions and emails, and we'd like to answer a number of questions in advance. And that way, we can move forward. So we're not going to answer these questions after public comment, because they've already been answered. And we're also not answering questions posted from the prior FAQ. So there was another FAQ that was distributed to the community, answering a number of questions that were out there. So this way, we respect everybody's time, and we avoid answering questions that have already been answered. Okay, so at this point, Mrs. Reichman, would you like to get to the start of the FAQ?
Yes, can you hear me? Dr. Bouchard indicated that my microphone does not sound good.
No, I was just going to say that, I'm sorry, but Mr. Reichman, your microphone is going in and out constantly. So I don't even know if they heard you in the beginning.
Switch devices.
Okay, just bear with us. We want to make sure you can hear all of this. It took a lot of time and energy to put together the answers to the questions. So we want to get to that momentarily. I'd sing a song, but you really don't want me to do that. Stop it, Mrs. Share.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. Is this better? Yeah, okay. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read with you a series of questions that we gathered. Dr. Toback and I will both be sharing the questions as they were presented to us and the answers that we were able to devise and put together today. First question, why are Wednesdays still virtual? Why are we waiting until March 1st? Wednesdays remain virtual for only two weeks, and we're returning to school on February 16th using a model that allowed us to remain open for much of the fall. This is a good first step and serves as a starting point for a sensible progression leading to a full return. We also know that when a large number of people are brought together after being apart for a period of time, there's an increased chance of COVID spread. We need to consider the possibility. Second question, will teachers be required to teach from their classrooms? In general, teachers will be teaching from their classrooms with the exception of those staff members who have accommodations due to medical conditions. Question number three. Why is a 15-building district being operated as one building instead of individual buildings? Throughout the fall, the district followed a surgical approach and responded to COVID and staffing situations by building and by cohorts. The only time that the district made across-the-board decisions was when public health officials warned about a massive spike in the cases after the holidays. Like many districts, our district considered this guidance and planned to remain virtual until January 19th in consideration of the concerns of the public health officials. Looking back, these officials accurately predicted a post-holiday spiking cases. The district also made an across-the-board decision based on the presence of COVID to remain virtual through February 16th. On January 14th, when the Board of Ed meeting was held, where a decision was made to remain virtual, we were at the peak of the pandemic. In addition to COVID considerations, the district was also concerned that many schools were not in a position to open due to staffing problems. Question number four. Why can't parents be made to choose virtual or in-person for their student or students for the remainder of the year, barring exposure to COVID? Governor Murphy's Executive Order Number 175 indicates that districts must accommodate synchronous and asynchronous instruction, which offers scheduling flexibility to parents and caregivers. Tomorrow, we'll be posting these FAQs, and you'll see attached the guidance from this executive order, and you'll be able to read about it in further detail. Number five. If we don't go back to five days now, what will September look like? What happens if the CDC guidelines don't change by next year? Will classes be smaller to accommodate a full class? At this point, we're really trying to get through this year and feel that it would not be helpful to speculate about any changes to the CDC guidance. Number six. Why can't we have teachers designated for all virtual students and others designated for in-person only? The district considered this option on a number of occasions. The school year was established under Governor Murphy's Executive Order 175, where parents were given the flexibility to determine how their children will attend school regardless of the reason. At this point, a change to this model would be extremely disruptive and would lead to the reassignment of students to other classes, other schools, or parents volunteering to have their children switch classes. Question number seven. Why can't kids have lunch in their classrooms if the cafeterias can't accommodate all the students? Are lunch aids available? We reported out a little bit on this. We obviously, Dr. Toback said, are seeking out additional cafeteria playground needs. And again, I just wanted to highlight the fact that at the last meeting, we expressed the need for additional substitutes. We had great outreach from the community, so I applaud the community and thank you for coming together. So many people wrote, and you saw tonight on the agenda, we are moving all these additional subs. Now, we're putting out a call for community members to sign up to be SCPAs. We do need your help. And as we work on our plan for Phase 5, there are a number of considerations, including the supervision of our youngest students is super important. And we're also looking at screen time, increased screen time, and recognizing that there will still be a number of students who select to be fully remote. So all these things are reconsidering as we're planning for Phase 5. Number eight. When will thorough cleaning occur when students are in five days a week? Our custodians work a second shift, and this is the time when that cleaning would occur. Number nine. The transition rate of COVID for New Jersey is 0.85%, the lowest since August. What is the metric the administration is using to wait to open five days a week in person? The mayor's last COVID update said 127 cases in the first week of February, but that's only 0.2% of the population. Currently, the district must consider guidance from multiple sources. Each day, we evaluate and look at the CDC guidance, guidance from the Department of Health, and its guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education. And this plays a major part in any of our decision-making. At this time, social distancing and mask-wearing are important and are all well-recognized as essential to reducing the COVID, regardless, the COVID spread, I'm sorry, regardless of location. A cautious approach made it possible for schools to operate throughout the fall with minimal disruption. There is no number, and there was never a number in this or any other school district. The metric used by the district is the Directive of the Governor and the NJ DOE guidance that requires mask-wearing, social distancing, and parental choice of instructional models. Question number 10. Reading the current plan, the full days in April will still be by cohorts. So is it full day as a length of time, but not all students five days a week? Is the district planning for hybrid cohorts for the remainder of 2021? Currently, maintaining cohorts means maintaining social distancing and the ability to quarantine smaller groups in the event of exposure. The proposed Phase 4 includes cohorts, and Phase 5 may include changes based on the condition and guidance available in that. And as many of you realize, during the time that we were operating with the hybrid model, we were able to quarantine certain groups. If we did not have those cohorts, we would have had to close down classes completely or possibly entire schools. Number 11. If, if the schedule is still hybrid, earlier dismissal, why do we have a lunch period? Why can't the students be dismissed at lunchtime? Dismiss everyone at 12:30 PM with a break and have two virtual afternoon classes? Concerns were raised about the number of consecutive hours of instruction, screen time, a lack of breaks, which led to change where there was a lunch period. When we resume in-person instruction, we will not follow the schedules that were established during the remote learning period. While at one time, younger students were dismissed to walk home for lunch or go out for lunch, this is no longer considered age-appropriate, and many parents would be concerned about this lack of supervision. Question 12. How will students with IEP special needs be addressed? They need to be in school five days a week. They're missing out on accommodations and services. When we post this document tomorrow, you'll see a link to the clarifying expectations that elaborates on this. But what I can share is consistent with the guidance issued by the United States Department of Education. At the start of the COVID-19 global pandemic, schools are required to implement student IEPs the greatest extent possible. During periods in which in-person instruction is not provided, special education programs should reflect the same time as their general education program. For example, an IEP mates might state 90 minutes of ELA instruction if the district is providing 60 minutes of ELA instruction instead of 90 minutes, due to an abbreviated schedule. Then the student in a special education program for ELA must receive at least 60 minutes as well. With the Phase 4 plan, students who are in self-contained programs will now be in school five days a week. Students who are in other programs will have an additional day of in-person instruction every other Wednesday. We are considering other ways to bring these students in for more in-person instruction without compromising COVID safety protocols and CDC guidance. There has been a lot of discussion and planning that we engaged in the past two days. So this will take some time, and we're going to continue working on this to present what we see as the best options possible. At this point, I'm going to have Dr. Toback continue with the Q and As, and then he will bring it back to me. And there are a number of additional special ed-related questions that were asked, and I will comment on those at the end.
Ready, thank you, Mrs. Reichman. Okay, so number 13. Question is, why are we virtual for two weeks after spring break? The answer is that we are not virtual during this time period. That is a consideration depending on how things go. But at this point, that is not part of the plan. Number 14. Question is, Beckton Regional High School in East Rutherford, Carlstadt East Rutherford Regional High School District has been hybrid and fully in-person since October with protective equipment, temperature scanners, a consultant nurse, and certified contact tracer. Why can't Wayne do this? So a recent program produced by the New Jersey School Boards Association demonstrated how Beckton Regional, a one-school, high-school-only district of 491 students, was able to continue with hybrid instruction five days per week. In the interview, the New Jersey School Boards Association noted that Beckton Regional is one of the few districts able to maintain instruction for five days per week, and the superintendent acknowledged that the small size of the district is one factor in making this possible and also acknowledged that Beckton averaged only three COVID cases per month. If you think about it, one of our cohorts at our high school is the equivalent to all of Beckton Regional High School. The school also dismisses all their students for lunch. They can walk home. The CDC does not recommend, and they do, they only have about two to three buses, so their transportation needs do not seem to be anywhere near the type of transportation operation that we have. The CDC does not recommend temperature scanners, and we have adequate nursing staff, whereas Beckton Regional employs only one school nurse. The fact is that each school district has a unique set of circumstances. Question number 15. What happens to the kindergarten classes that contain kids from more than one school if we ever get to five days in person? For example, during hybrid, my daughter's teacher splits herself two days in one school and then two days in a different school for the same PM class. Once we get to five days, does that mean one class will lose their teacher? The answer is, there is a chance that your child would be reassigned to a different kindergarten section if the schedule is adjusted for a five-day return. Regardless, all students will be instructed with the same district-approved curriculum and resources. The district is also prepared to add additional kindergarten staffing as needed so that we maintain proper class sizes, especially for our youngest learners. Question number 16. What will be done to rectify any imbalance in high school cohort rotation? Developing the high school schedule for each phase of our reopening, we have worked to ensure that each of our cohorts receive an equitable experience regarding in-person learning. At times, the schedule has been altered due to special circumstances, for example, closures due to COVID concerns. Going forward, it's our priority to ensure that our students will have an equal amount of in-school learning. Both high schools have created a schedule that allows for their in-person experience to be equitable. And tomorrow, as you go through the FAQ, once you're able to download it, you'll be able to see a little bit more information about exactly how the district will achieve that. Question number 17 is a complicated question. I'm going to try to keep this quick. Why is the slide in the Board of Ed meeting presentation, the New Jersey Coronavirus Map and case count made using a data source from the COVID Tracking Project? that is made up of volunteers and individuals who are not scientists or medical personnel? The information is often in direct conflict with the CDC and Johns Hopkins. Is this being used as the main directive for reopening our Wayne schools? So there's two graphics that will be included when you can download this tomorrow. But the information included in the graph is based on public information produced in each state and provides basic information regarding the direction of the virus. So I can get a little bit more into the technical aspects of that question, but the bottom line is that I think that the graph that we have basically shows a general trend. And the whole point is that we consider, if you go back to every single presentation that we've had, it clearly shows that the district considers multiple sources of information that we've reported regularly as we did tonight and regarding COVID cases statewide in Passaic County, in Wayne, and every one of our schools. So the graph was included regularly as one source of information. They are virtually the same and they do not conflict with any reporting from the CDC. So now we're going to go on to a section about student support services. So there's a Q and A that we also developed for parents who specifically had questions for the Student Support Services Department. So at this point, I'd like to turn things back over to Mrs. Reichman to answer those questions.
Thank you. First question. The caseworker is not helping. What do I do? If there is a concern reaching your child's case manager, please use email to communicate directly with him or her as they might not have remote access to their voicemails or district call lines. It's recommended to copy our Director of Student Support Services, Dana Serh, we'll include her email address tomorrow on that correspondence if you're having difficulty connecting with your case manager. Next question. How can children with ADHD be expected to spend so much time on a computer? They have an attention disorder and a human interaction in guidance. Students with ADHD and other disabilities do have a hard time with virtual learning. At the current moment in time, virtual learning is the best way to provide instruction through devices when being physically in school is not possible. Teachers utilize strategies to sustain and redirect attention. Strategies might include providing multiple breaks, chunking lessons into shorter units, and requiring regular feedback from students. Next question. OT and speech are not working on the computer. Many appointments get canceled. Not enough time to make a difference. What can be done? All related services, OT, PT, and speech are provided as stated in duration and frequency in your child's IEP. These services may be provided in person or through telepractice. Since April 1st, 2020, executive orders from Governor Murphy have allowed the practice of receiving related services through telepractice. Anxiety in these kids is through the roof. The kids want to do their work but are getting so frustrated and not having enough guidance. They are having breakdowns. What can be done? Parents and or staff have been identifying students who need both support academically and emotionally. Based upon these communicated and observed needs, support has been increased on an individual basis. Please reach out to your child's teacher with your concerns. Some kids are getting distracted by having other kids looking back at them on the screen and they don't pay attention to the teacher. What can be done? This is a classroom-specific issue. Please share these concerns with your child's teacher. Overall, teachers utilize strategies to sustain and redirect attention. Strategies might include providing multiple breaks, chunking lessons into shorter units, and requiring, requiring regular feedback from students. Some younger children cannot keep up with looking at one screen and opening up a tab to write notes on another screen. They have to print out pages but cannot do that at the same time during live instruction. What can be done? This is a classroom-specific issue. Please share these concerns with your child's teacher so adjustments to assigning tasks and activities may be better coordinated. As you can see, as I'm going through the questions, these are authentic questions that were presented by the parents. We appreciate this. It's very helpful and obviously we can't respond or troubleshoot any of the issues if we're not aware. So this has been very, very helpful and it gives us an opportunity to also work with the administration and talk with our teachers to work together and think about solutions to help your children. Next question. Some students are experiencing depression, social regression, breakdowns, and crime. What can be done? I know this is a big concern and a big theme across schools, all across the nation due to the pandemic. Parents and or staff have been identifying students who need extra support, both academically and emotionally. Based on these communicated or observed needs, support has been increased on an individual basis. Please reach out to your teacher with your concerns. These are some of the things that we've had done and I would just like to share and highlight because there's been a great effort made. Since October, we've had two parent and guardian group meetings. We had a parent guardian open forum and at least 10 parent guardian presentations. The Student Support Services website has been updated to include information about more presentations and resources that might be helpful to parents. Students who receive discreet trial instruction in our multiply-disabled classroom received devices to access their instruction which weren't accessible to them through the Chromebook. The Special Olympics, New Jersey awarded Wayne Township Public Schools a Unified Champion Schools grant of $44,600 for the 2021 school year to launch a unified social inclusion program. This will provide more social opportunities for students through a virtual platform. Wayne Valley and Wayne High School students took part in Special Olympics Hill Day 2021. Hill Day 2021 provided an opportunity for students to meet virtually with New Jersey senators and members across Congress to discuss important, the importance of inclusion within Unified Champion Schools. They were asked to each have a story of Unified Champion Schools and how to make it, make a difference on them and the school climate. They rose to the occasion and helped adults understand the importance of funding, UCF, and health issues that many have faced during the pandemic and in the world of remote learning. STARS, Students Teaching and Reaching Students Club, continues to run at all secondary levels. The Wayne Hill Unified Club collaborated with the STARS Club to create a Valentine's Day video. The focus was centered on art and gratitude. The video will air this Friday during morning, during morning announcements. Those were the questions that we were able to gather and I would encourage parents to continue to write to us. As we receive them, we can continue to meet and discuss ways to better service your children. And I think some of the best ideas have come from the information that you were presenting to us. So again, please know it's never a bother if we do not respond right away. It is not because we are being dismissive or ignoring. It just takes time to get all the experts in the room and come up with solutions to best meet the needs of everyone. Thank you. Dr. Toback, did you have any further comments?
Not at this time, but what I do have is one final detail, which is the HIV report. So just to give you some good news, during this recording period, there were no cases of HIV reported to the district.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reichman, and thank you, Dr. Toback. I hope everyone was able to hear well and got the answers to all of those advanced questions. Hopefully that will help us with our public portion, which we'll talk about in a moment. But for now, Mr. Moffett, if we have any revisions to read into the agenda?
Yes, we have a couple tonight. Starting in the emergent action item section, under T, we have T2, approval of district substitutes. Please remove number 19, Maria Nastro. It's a duplicate name. We will revise action to reflect effective date from February 16, 2000, February 16, 2021 through April 6, 2021. Also, under T3, approval of revised items. We will be withdrawing number one. T number five, approval of appointment of permanent subs. We will revise action to reflect effective date from February 16, 2021 through April 8, 2021. And additionally, in number one and number three, we'll revise effective date to February 16, 2021. We also have a change in T10, which is approval to revise the rate for permanent and per DM substitutes. We will be changing effective date from February 12, 2021 to February 16, 2021. And we will also be adding item one under emergent school resource legal. And the number one is approval of examination for cause and administrative leave. Recommended action reads as follows. Whereas the employee ID number 7608 is employed by the Wayne Township Board of Education and whereas, based upon information provided by administration and the judgment of the board, the employee has exhibited evidence of a deviation from normal, normal physical or mental health, which is adversely affecting the employee's ability to perform essential job functions. And whereas, as a result of the foregoing, the board desires to direct the employee to submit to a physical and psychiatric and/or psychological examination pursuant to NJ SA 18A:16-2 and NJ AC 6A:32-6.3 and Board of Education Policy 3161. Now therefore be resolved, based on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, employee ID number 7608 is hereby required and directed to submit to a physical examination by a school's district-designated physician and a written medical report detailing the results of such examination is to be provided confidentially to the board. And be it further resolved, employee ID number 7608 is further required and directed to submit to a psychiatric examination and/or psychological examination by a licensed psychologist as the board may hereafter designate and a written report detailing the result of such examination is to be provided confidentially to the board within 30 days of the date, February 11, 2021. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized and directed to prepare and provide the employee with appropriate statutory notice of the board's action and the reasons therefore. And it be further resolved that this employee has been placed on administrative leave and pay pending completion of these examinations and/or further board action. That concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Unmute. Thank you, Mr. Moffett. We're going on to our first public portion and I just want to mention a few things. We had a legal discussion with our attorney about our parameters under the Open Public Meetings Act and how we perform that portion of our meeting in addition to the importance of getting to board business and ending at a reasonable hour for many reasons, especially our staff. To give you an example, our last meeting ended past 12:30 and that's just when our custodians are entering to clean up this space and our IT director is here until 2 AM backing up the meeting, the recording, and sending it on to Channel 77 for the archive. So we're trying to avoid that this evening while still giving you the public a chance to speak and preferably just ask questions because at the last meeting, when we reviewed the number of people who spoke, it was mostly comment. There's nothing to respond to. So those you could direct to us in an email. If it's about your individual child, we have a chain of command. It's preferable for you to take that route first. Go through your teacher, your principal. That's not something that we can resolve at a board meeting. The FAQ, we read it. It'll be posted, added to the current one. We're going to start this first public portion with two-minute time limit and we will be ending it approximately 9:30. So let's get started. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to two minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Puttup. Okay, let's begin.
Hi, my name is Roger Guns. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I live on 22 Lally Ave. So I'm, I'm, I'm still reeling from the last meeting where we just continued to go over these plans and plans and plans. And to be quite honest with you, everyone's running around like COVID is the worst thing that's ever happened. Statistically, it's just not. So in, in August of 2020, CDC reported 188 flu deaths of children, just in the season of, of the flu season, not the entire year, just the season. We're not near that number right now across the United States of 188 deaths of children. And even if we were, how does that align to the flu? How, how, how do you guys sit there and justify keeping the schools closed? When you have no medical, look, I don't care about cases. Cases are cases. Cases are going to come, they're going to go. Most children don't even have any side effects whatsoever and majority of parents know it's 99% of kids are going to recover. Yet we've got the school shutdown because of some reason that's outside of all of this. It's, 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 it's getting, it's getting obnoxious. It's nauseating and it's mind-numbing. It's time that you guys own it, tell the, tell the public what really the problem is and it can't be because of COVID because the, the, the medical facts are just not behind you. No matter what you say, it's not behind you. It's time to open the schools and, and, and lastly, the comment that, that you guys made about, you know, they got the parents who have kids that are, that are emotionally disturbed and they're, and they're having trouble. Why couldn't you just say we're trying to get the kids back to school and, and instead of acting like this is going to be prolonged and the kids are going to continue to go down this path of depression? It's absolutely ridiculous. Ridiculous. It's, it's, this has got to stop. This cat and mouse game has got to stop.
Yep. Next caller. Dr. Bishard. Next caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Bradley. I'm at 28 Pittman Place. First of all, I'd like to object to a two-minute time limit. I'm a taxpayer and I demand to be heard for a time that's respectable and I'm allowed to get my opinion across. First off, I'd like to suggest the solutions that you're looking for when asking all those fact questions and it was, we are looking for a solution, we are looking for a solution, we are looking for a solution. Might I suggest opening the schools? Not to mention the fact that we followed the CDC guidelines when it was suggested that we close the school. I'm unaware of why the science isn't being followed now. We have a doctor that you employed to give his opinion, factual, scientific opinion based upon the numbers. I'd like to hear from Dr. Goldberg as opposed to Eda Ferente. I don't know why we're following the union as opposed to following the science. I am part of a union as well and I understand how a union works. A union is a bigger industry. It has an objective. It has an agenda. And the teachers, when I speak of the union, I'm not speaking of the teachers because the teachers are simply a mechanism of the machine and the machine is the union. My union recently voted to kick our spouses off of our insurance for the greater good. That's how a union works. A union has an agenda. I expect the Board of Education's agenda to be what it promised to be, which is to advocate for our children. And might I also suggest that as the sports, which shockingly, the children were, came in contact with COVID, I mean whoever could have foreseen that happening in indoor sports, but much like you don't blanket shut all of the sports, why are you shutting, why are you blanket shutting all of the schools? These preemptive shuttings, these blanket shuttings in a district with 14 schools is ridiculous. It's unacceptable. And also, Dr. Toback, I would suggest that your greatest weakness, I would argue, isn't your, the, the substitute issue. Your greatest weakness is your lack of forethought and your lack of planning. Where is the Plexiglas? Where is the temperatures? Where is a nurse? Where is a scientific doctor that's telling us what's happening and what's going on? Your greatest weaknesses are far beyond shortage of staff. I also would like to request that Matthew Giordano recuse himself as, from voting on this as a, as a president of a union in a different district. There's a clear conflict.
Bradley, I'm sorry, it's two minutes, but if we have time before 9:30, you can come back on. Next. Go ahead. Hello? Are you there? Next caller.
Hi, this is David Ginsberg to any way. Unlike the first couple callers, I'll actually follow instructions and answer, just ask a couple of questions for the board and mainly Dr. Toback, where you can add these to the FAQ. and answer, just ask a couple of questions for the board and mainly Dr. Toback, where you can add these to the FAQ as you're going to send out tomorrow. Just to be clear, make sure I understand, on three one, when the cohorts go back, it is the alternating where one week cohort A will be three days and cohort B will be two days and then the following week, they'll be vice versa. So if you could just clarify that in your FAQ, that'd be helpful. On four nineteen, the school hours, can you confirm, will go back to the normal daily schedule? I know you said extended, but does that mean extended to the usual three o'clock or so dismissal time for elementary? And what safety measures are you guys planning to put in place for lunch? Obviously, eating lunch, taking their masks off, so be inside at that point. What safety measures, can you just share those with us? The third question is, do you have a rough estimate on when you're going to clear your phase five? I know obviously it's predicated by the guidance that we get from the CDC, but do you have sort of an idea roughly when you would share that? Last two questions are, one, as we obviously approach here, is there sort of a, how many COVID cases I guess are needed to shut down a school or grade again to go virtual? What are those thresholds, right? Especially as the variants are definitely starting to grow across the state? And whether anyone wants to admit or not, it's only a matter of time before they are. Here in Biscay County in Wayne, is there certain thresholds you guys look for before we think about going virtual? Again, whether it's a classroom, a school, a district, as we aim now into phase four. My last question is more future thinking, but I've seen a lot of people ask it on social media. So for twenty twenty-one school year, I saw, I saw the kindergarten registration has opened. Is that still planned to be full day K as originally planned a budget for, or has any of that changed? Again, if you can answer those in your FAQs, Dr. Toback, I think it'd be very appreciated for the community. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
Yes, good evening. My name is Dennis Carroll. I'm an officer with the WA. And I have a statement to read on behalf of the general membership. We missed, we wish to make just one statement tonight. The vast majority of the Wayne educators do believe that the safest and educationally soundest approach at this point is to remain virtual until the teachers have had an opportunity to get their vaccination. It's hard to argue the teachers not at an increased risk if they leave their homes to teach. It is also this difficult to claim that hybrid is a superior model to virtual. We can pay attention to one group or the other, seldom both. When we do go back, teachers will, will also have the added burden of being the germ and sanitation police in their rooms and in their hallways. So let's be clear, what we're being asked to do is to risk our health and to teach in a more dangerous environment and using a method of teaching that is the least effective. And you're asking that of a staff that is largely burned out. And you know what? We will, and we'll do our best. We respect the process, even if we disagree with the final decision. We have been deemed essential to your children's wellbeing. We understand the community struggles, but what we can't understand were some of the comments in the last meeting. Many of those disparaging and hurtful remarks were hurled at educators at the last board meeting. We recognize that those reckless voices represent the frustrations that we all feel. But those remarks were heard by your teachers and tearing down teachers who are struggling to bring a quality education to your child with obstacle after obstacle constantly thrown their way is simply shameful. These words will echo in their memories and in the halls of our schools. But we also heard those that said they want to help us as we make our way back into school and we thank them. But we asked that, but we asked, what can you offer us? What we need are vaccines and you simply can't give it to us. It's not within your power. But what you can do is hopefully help us with the vaccines once they are available. What you can also do is please stop bashing the union. Please understand that our union is our teachers. We're a democratic organization that serves at the pleasure of our members. So we speak for our members when we speak out.
That's your time. That's your time, sir. Thank you. Next caller. Hello? Can you unmute? Next caller. Try again.
Hi, my name is Amy Nazarko from ninety-one Chestnut Drive. I'm a lifelong Wayne resident and I'm a parent of two Wayne students. I'm calling on behalf of multiple parents and teachers. Once again, I'm calling about the return to hybrid and the removable, removal of virtual Wednesdays. If we are to go through with this model, my question is, can we please allow teachers to do their office hours from home? This simple safety measure will help keep numbers down, will help raise morale of very stressed out teachers and will help to keep the schools open. When we get rid of virtual Wednesdays, it raises the contact days from, for teachers from four days to five days. The easiest way to reduce contact is to allow teachers to do virtual office hours from home instead of shared spaces like all of our shared classrooms and offices, especially in the upper grades. In addition, students will never see their teachers without their masks because teachers will be in mass for five days straight, eight hours a day, forty hours a week in mass, trying to be heard on a Google Meet. In many surrounding districts like Northern Valley and Chatham, teachers use their lifetime, their lunchtime to travel. This negates most issues with insurance and timing. Teachers that stay in the building will be with less people in shared spaces, reducing exposures when they remove their masks to eat and drink. This simple change will do so much for us. Students will be able to see their teacher's smiles in office hours. Teachers will feel less stress because they will no longer have to eat in shared spaces. And finally, there will actually be a reduced need for substitutes because there will be less of a need to quarantine based on staff exposures and possible maskless exposures. We know that quarantines means more substitutes, which means it is more likely for individual schools to go back to remote. So until teachers can all be vaccinated, can we please at least, at the very least, allow them to go home for their office hours? Let's do right by them. Let's show teachers we care about them and reduce their exposure at work by allowing them the dignity to do their office hours from where they feel safest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Tori Esposito, forty-seven Woodlot Road. The April nineteenth is a proposed date. What would make that date change? For the full person on, in phase four, does that mean that the remote kids are on until three? So now we're having to do more screen time? And then back to your point about you don't know what September looks like, you know, I have to vehemently defend that and say, listen, you guys are, are encouraging kindergarten registration. Well, can a parent ask, is that going to be on a screen next year or is that going to be in person? I mean, you guys need to be forward thinking about that because you have people that are making decisions. You know, should I send my kids to private school? Should I move out of the town and go to a town that offers full, full in-person school? So you need to think about that because people have life-changing decisions to make about that. And then as far as the WEA comments, I mean, again, first it was PPE in August, now it's vaccines. Thank, you know, if there was never a vaccine, I don't even know what the argument would be. They were safe in September. We all went back hybrid. Let's go back now. Stop moving the goalposts because miraculously there's going to be vaccines for kids starting in August. And the next thing you know, your kid can't go to school till you get a vaccine. Okay? And again, nobody was bashing teachers, but parent bashing was okay on the last call as well. Let's just all cut it out. Thank you.
Next caller.
Mario Coletti, Seven Berry Drive. I first like just to thank my kids' teachers for all the hard work that they've been putting in the last few weeks. I know it's been a struggle, but they have been working hard. I just have a few statements and then mostly questions. First, I would just like to say that I agree that the virtual model isn't working and I would hope that we can get back to a full day as soon as possible. But virtual is by far working far less than hybrid is for my, my kids at the present moment in time. You know, we're all living with wearing masks. I know a lot of teachers have expressed concerns, you know, they can't see their facial expressions, et cetera. But it's just the way of life right now and unfortunately, we all have to deal with it and it's the only way to keep us safe. And I believe that being in person even with a mask is more beneficial than through a computer screen. So now to some of my questions. My first question is, have we thought of trying a phased-in approach like New York City has where the elementary schools return to full in-person first and then middle school and high school, et cetera? Are there going to possibly be any changes to the phase planning reopening with the upcoming CDC recommendations that are expected by tomorrow? Also, I had brought this up, but I want to ask it again. Is there any thought to surveying the parents to see which ones would stay virtual versus in-person for the remainder of the year? As this would give us a better sense of how many kids would be in the classroom. And at the same token, if there is more kids in the classroom, potentially not to overcrowd them, but maybe not be able to space them out six feet, would we be able to put up plastic dividers? Have the kids already wearing masks more consistently, which are both CDC recommendations at the present time? Also, has the board written to the governor to prioritize teachers for vaccination? I know I have. And finally, what, I know this has been asked and potentially asked and answered, but what are the metrics we are using for normal return? Just some general ideas, are teachers, teachers being vaccinated, cases dropping to a certain level, you know, some examples.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's your time, Dr. Coletti. Do you have one final question?
Uh, yeah, it was, do we have a contact trace to trace in these cases of the students and staff?
Okay, thank you. Whenever you want me to stop, Mark.
Hello?
Whenever you're ready. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stephen Kenova, seventy-nine Old Homestead Road. I just have a few questions. It was said earlier on that all virtual or all in-person is not an option because of, I believe, Governor Murphy's executive order requires synchronous and asynchronous methods. I just don't understand how that answers the question. Are, are districts that offer this option define the order? And then also, Governor Murphy's executive order is also cited to explain how teletherapy sessions are allowed in regard to issues with remote therapy sessions, including canceled sessions, but how does citing the executive order again answer the issue of canceled therapy sessions? Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Hold on a second. I think we might be ready to answer a few. Dr. Toback? Yeah, you have a few questions now.
Yes, we can definitely hear a few of the questions. Okay. So Mr. Guns, from what I can tell is what he said was mostly comments. Mrs. Bradley, you asked a few questions. Why are you shutting schools? We've communicated the answer to that question quite a few times, so I'm not going to go on about it. He also indicated there was a lack of forethought. Certainly, our Board of Ed is very much aware of just how much forethought that has gone into every stage of our reopening. The question about where are the nurses? Where's the Plexiglas? Where are the temperature scanners? So the CDC guidance does not recommend temperature scanners. CDC recommends in-home screening, just like we're doing. As far as the nurses, we have a full staff of nurses across the district and we have a nursing supervisor. So I think we're adequately staffed for our, our purposes. And we also partner with the Department of Health in Wayne if there are questions and things like that. And then the question about Plexiglas. I'm sorry. All right, okay, a little bit closer here. I'm not muted.
No, Kathy.
Oh. Okay. Okay. So each staff member has a portable shield, which is something that, there was a joint order that was placed by the Wayne Education, Wayne Education Association and the school district with understanding that obviously the, the preference of the staff members are these portable units, these shields. So that's what we have. If there are needs for ordering additional Plexiglas and things like that, we could certainly do that. But at this point, there's been no request for that sort of thing. And so I think we're, we're doing okay when it comes to all the PPE and other things that we have in place. Okay, so I'm going on to questions from David Ginsberg. Okay? So the idea is that on March first, cohorts go to kind of like the AAA, then BB. So in other words, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a group of students would be in and then the other group would go on Thursday, Friday, and then you switch the following week. So that's the idea. And I'll, I'll clarify that in the, in the presentation because I think that would help people. This is a one pager and sometimes you can't get all the facts. And so the idea of the school hours go to full day. So yeah, we would go to our pre-COVID schedule. That's the, that's the plan. The lunch safety measures, I mean, there's a lot to talk about, but overall, it involves spreading students out over multiple periods and multiple locations. Phase five would be something that would probably happen in May, depending on how things happen on April nineteenth and how things go during that time period before the beginning of May. The cases needed to shut down, and we've talked about this, like, I don't mind talking about it. There are certain situations that we run into. Okay, why does a school shut down? When you lose the ability to contact trace. Okay, so in other words, if there's so much exposure and there's so many situations that involve COVID and there's a requirement to do contact tracing, in some cases, it's just not possible. So literally when you have exposure, so if a student comes to school who is positive, or if you have, in some cases, you have multiple students that come to school, we find out after school that they're positive, but they've been in classes and in contact with other students all day long. It's very difficult to contact trace. So that's one thing. Other situations, you know, as far as the threshold, it really depends on the circumstances. So there is essentially, there's a series of decisions that is made by the district when we shut down. One of them is staffing. And so I've talked a little bit about sometimes when you have COVID, COVID is directly related in many cases to our staffing. If you get close to somewhere around fifty staff members that are either positive or quarantining, talked about that before, that we basically were able to absorb about, we have our sixty or so staff members that receive accommodations, they're out, they have a substitute in district to help supervising students. We have our thirty-five or so teachers that are out on any given day, that puts us up to a hundred. We have people on leave, all kinds of other things. But then when you throw in an explosion of cases, when you have a large number of staff members that are either positive or quarantining and we have no subs, that's really when we have problems. And so like I said, the staffing situation is, is really largely due to a large increase in cases and which means that a large number of staff members are unexpectedly very quickly out of school. Okay, so the comment from Mr. Carroll, from Ms. Nazarko. Okay, so we're on, which was, this is Mr. Esposito? Okay. So I think April ninth, April nineteenth is a proposed date. So that is the question I had here. And the idea is that we would go to a full in-person school day. Dr. Coletti. So he, he made reference to new CDC guidance that should be available tomorrow. Did I miss something?
Mr. Esposito, he wanted to know what would change four nineteen from happening? And will that, will the new FDK be virtual?
Okay, all right, okay, okay, okay. So four nineteen, what, what could make that happen or make that change? What would, yeah, not happen. Okay, so not happen. What could make that not happen is if you have a large increase in cases. If you have a lot of COVID cases, if the variants take hold here locally and you have a spike in cases, those sorts of things can happen. You could have a shutdown that is ordered because of the variants. There's a lot of things that we have to consider. And then I guess that was basically, that was, what was the other part? We're good? Okay. Good. Would you want to talk about?
Oh, the phased-in approach that we are looking at phasing and different models.
Yes. Okay, so as far as the phased-in approach, that question, we are definitely looking into different options to bring students in and certainly other districts have done that based on the fact that the elementary schools are smaller schools. And so like a high school is definitely much more of a challenge than middle school because our, some of our middle schools are around seven hundred students. That would be a challenge, but elementary schools, some things might be able to, we might be able to do things there earlier based on the size of the schools. Okay. That was there. Okay, so there are some questions that we, we did answer before, but in this case, the issue about remaining virtual for the remainder of year. Okay, so in fact, there is an executive order, this executive order one seventy-five that does allow parents flexibility. That executive order is something that we're going to share on our FAQ tomorrow. But the idea is that if we were to say, listen, you will absolutely stay in virtual for the remainder of the year, that probably violates the spirit of Executive Order one seventy-five. It would be tough to continue with, you know, making people adhere to that, particularly if the cases, if situations improve and say a parent said, listen, I'd like my child to attend school for the last month of the year. So it would be tough to do something like that. The question about the Board of Ed passing a resolution or taking action on the vaccine issue for, for teachers at the last meeting, Mr. Giordano read a resolution that the Board of Ed approved and it was distributed, I believe, to the governor and local legislators. and it was distributed, I believe, to the governor and local legislators regarding the board's desire to see teachers fast-tracked into a vaccine. Okay. So that's, well, that's, that's a... Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the FAQ, but basically, Mrs. Reichman was pointing out that ultimately teletherapy is allowable. And so I'm not really quite sure, I mean, you're talking about specific cases. Could there be cases that, you know, of teachers or service providers canceling sessions? The answer is, it's possible. But that's something that to me is an individual thing that we need to bring up, brought up with Department of Support Services.
Let's continue, next caller. Ms. Graff, you've been waiting.
Hi, this is Jennifer Graff, 60 Magnolia Place. I have a follow-up question regarding the current hybrid model, where teachers teach virtual and in-person at the same time. Would you even consider this for at least the elementary level? Where kids tend to be a little bit more distracted than older students? I know your reply was that it would be very disruptive to change mid-year, but quite honestly, I think this whole year has been disruptive. I'm, I can't imagine changing something that would make life better would, would be a good reason to disrupt things. So I mean, what I would say is, have you considered surveying parents and teachers to see if the benefits of having students and teachers in person, without the distract, distraction of a screen outweigh the disruption of a change in class? I imagine it might be an easier option for teachers to concentrate on the kids in their class versus having to teach to a screen and students at the same time, as well as benefiting the student to have their full attention of their teacher, especially at the elementary level. I'd be curious to know if that's something that you would consider maybe polling. And in regards to polling, I'm curious to know if teachers have been polled recently directly by the Board of Ed and not involving the union? I ask this because we hear from the same teachers who are union officers at every Board of Ed meeting, reading a script given to them by their union. And I don't believe the voices of the majority of teachers are being heard. Questions I would like to know from those teachers is, how do they, if they feel comfortable returning five whole days to school in the current situation? Do they want to wait till they're vaccinated to return to in-person school? And in regard to this current hybrid model, would they prefer to teach directly to their students and have a designated teacher for virtual, even if...
That's your time, ma'am. Do you have a lot more? Okay, thank you. Next caller. Hello? Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alan Tempequio, 41 Gibbs Drive. I do have a concern relating to the Phase Four plan that would be in effect from February 16th until April 19th, when Phase Five would go into effect. As I understand, it effective February 16th, we would return to the prior daily hybrid schedule, which per the schedule I received is less instruction in the classroom each day. Specifically, in middle school, the current full-day schedule has Period Nine ending at 1:50 PM. But the Phase Four schedule calls for Period Nine to end at 1:14 PM. Said differently, middle school students would have less instruction in Phase Four each day in the classroom, even though this plan's goal, I thought, was to have more classroom instruction each day. In your presentation, you referred to this as a progression. And by April 19th, Phase Five will be a full-day instruction. But between now and April 19th, classroom instruction is less per day. Dr. Toback, you mentioned you need to walk before you run. I agree. But my question is, why do we need to take one step back with less classroom instruction per day in Phase Four before we take two steps forward with full-day instruction in Phase Five? Thank you.
Next.
Hello?
Go ahead.
I'm Ely Nessus, I'm, my, 576 Valley Road, and I'm a seventh grader at Anthony Wayne Middle School. I would just like to bring up a few things. I would love to return virtually. But first, before I say anything, I would like to mention, my teachers are amazing. They try very hard, but it is very difficult for them as well, with all the technical difficulties. But what I want to bring up really is the difficulties of virtual learning. Virtual learning is very difficult for me because it takes so long. It takes like around 15 minutes to start a class, because it's about who's on the Google Meet? Who's not on the Google Meet? Who's actually working? Who has their camera on? Who doesn't? Who's near the phone? Who's answering the teacher? It is so difficult to learn. It is so difficult to understand what your teachers are saying, because it, whether it's glitchy audio, the teacher gets kicked out of the meet. How, do we plan on how, on being virtual and hybrid this entire school year? And have a hybrid schedule and not return? Because when I was in school, it was almost like a ghost town. There's no one in the building. There was three kids in a class made for 20. And my question is, will we ever be able to be in five days a week without being told, we are dangerous? We are this, we are that. Will we ever be able to feel like we can be in and we are learning again? Because I feel that I am not learning right now. I'm not learning to the ability, the ability that I should be learning at. I, I really hope that we are able to learn. And I, I just want to know if we, if we, next year, will be able to have a five-day schedule? If we're going to have this option again, where we have to accommodate online students next year with a bunch of vaccines? Will we be forced to stay home when we should have an option? Or is this, if teachers refuse to go, are we going to have longer time off? I, I don't understand. I, I don't know where this is all coming from. It is so safe in my building. I feel safer in my school building than I do in the food store, than I do in many places. My teachers are amazing at home.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling. Next caller. Are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Hi. Oh, I'm sorry, Alan A. Sartre, 61 Brendan and Wayne. Just a quick question. And maybe it's just me, but I am not understanding the, what's beginning on March 1st? And with, in-school Wednesdays? Can you, would you guys be able to go into more detail about that? It'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rose Cabanas. I live at 35 Harwood Place. I have a few questions for you guys. First, I want to do, I want to say that my daughter's high school teachers are absolutely phenomenal. They work their butts off. They do teach the kids online, in the high school, Wayne Valley. Which leads me to my next question for the elementary school kids. I want to ask, do these teachers actually care about our kids? Because to me, I feel like they don't, they don't want to be there, they don't want to teach them. And I feel that my son sees it too, that they don't care about him. My next question is, I understand that the teachers are scared. They're nervous, they fear for their life. We all do. Cops, firemen, doctors, everyone, they fear for their lives. But we don't stop our job, we don't stop taking care of others. And it's their job to teach these kids. And they have failed my younger kid in ways that I can't even explain. My little guy, I have never seen like this, and I am so depressed that the teachers of Wayne, which I moved to Wayne because of the school system, they have failed my kid in learning. My other question is, do you guys plan on opening up in September? Telling us that you do not know right now is unacceptable, because a lot of parents out there are trying to make plans, and they're trying to make reservations for their kids in other schools and stuff like that if we are not back in full-time. You got to understand that we have jobs too, just like you guys. We have jobs too, that we got to accommodate. And we can't be told at the last minute, one day we're on, one day we're off. That's not acceptable in a real-life job. I just don't understand how the township of Wayne, with all the tax dollars that we pay here, we don't have our stuff together with the school system yet. All these towns around us have their stuff together, and they're making it work. Maybe Dr. Toback needs to reach out to some of them and ask them how they're doing it, and get some advice, because they are obviously finding ways to do it. I also want to ask, last question. I know most of the teachers that are teaching right now, their kids are in school, and I know their kids are not falling behind.
This is your time, if you have a question, one sentence.
How do they think we feel as parents, knowing that our kids are not in school?
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Heather Gelenella at 75 Batwood Place. I'm a mom of three, a dental hygienist, a volunteer with the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, and I also have the lung disease cystic fibrosis, a progressive disease with no cure, which puts me in the high-risk COVID category, and I still want my kids in-person, full-time. I've learned that no matter what life throws at me, I still carry on moving forward with my life as safely as possible, and to never stop living. And with that attitude, I've carried myself through a major comeback with my health after almost suffocating to death, that took courage and a lot of years fighting for my life. And I hope to inspire others by that as well. I was never told by any doctor to stay home from school, that my kids should stay home, stay home from the gym, which I go to five days a week, or anywhere because of COVID. So I continue to push through life's obstacles. One thing I've learned is you got to stand up and be brave, even when you don't want to. So now I'm asking, when will you show up and stand up for our children and open the schools full-time in-person? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Are you there? *9 to unmute on a telephone, I believe.
Stuart Rutherford?
Okay.
You hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, I really would like to straighten a couple of things out here. I, I think I represent the majority in this town that don't have children in the school district, but do pay the taxes around here as well. At a previous board meeting, the doctor said the Swedish example was the correct way to address COVID-19. I Googled up Sweden COVID-19 that night, and it turns out Sweden was having its highest infection rate at that time. And their, their way of dealing with COVID has been a disaster for them. I don't know where the doctor gets his information from. If I'm wrong, I'd like to hear about that. The gentleman tonight talked about that he doesn't believe this COVID is as serious as everybody's making it out to be. The statistics right now in America is 27.4 million cases with 473,000 deaths. That's just in the United States. The world is 107.4 million cases with 2.36 million deaths. That's a real statistic, it really is. With, with this demonstration against you and all these remarks that are being made, I also Googled up Los Angeles Unified School District that has 11,000 students, correction, 657,000 students and 11,000 employees. And I Googled up LAUSD demonstrations COVID-19, and there wasn't one demonstration. But yet here in this small little town, you've got these folks that are making those policemen stand out there as though this was the Capitol Building, defending against an insurrection. The insurrection, I'd like to know who's behind this? All this chatter about how the teachers are this and that, and how Dr. Toback is somehow or another telling the truth or whatever they've got to say about him. And I, for one, am pretty sick and tired of it. Have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Next caller. Hello? Next caller.
Good evening, my name is Eden Ferrante. I am the president of the Wayne Education Association. I'm the one that seems to be mentioned quite often lately at these meetings. I'm speaking tonight to continue with the statement that Mr. Carroll prepared. As, as it was previously stated, we are being deemed essential workers in terms of our students' education. However, we are not being treated as such in terms of vaccine. We are being asked to return to in-person instruction because we are essential, and we will do it because we are dedicated professionals. A previous caller was correct, a union fights for the greater good. We are a union made up of teachers and support staff, and we will always do what is in the best interest of all of our members. We make no apologies about that. We need to stop attempting to separate teachers from their union. Our union is our teachers, our nurses, our secretaries. We are a democratic organization that serves at the pleasure of our members. So please stop creating an enemy that doesn't exist, just to be, feel better about bashing teachers. When you slam the WEA, you slam the teachers, and your teachers are hearing this. And finally, the third point that Mr. Carroll was trying to make is an easy thing. Please remember that we are people too. We have families and children. We have family members who have gotten ill and have died. Two of us in this district have paid the ultimate price. We fear the new strand. We fear the attitude of parents that we have heard here tonight that say this virus is not a big deal. What protective measures are going on in those families? How seriously are they taking the CDC guidelines? Are we to feel confident that families are being truthful when filling out the health app while we are not vaccinated? This is not the first time we've heard of members in this community showing actions that violate safety protocols. We hear that there were many Super Bowl parties last Sunday, and we fear we are returning at a point when there may be another local spike because of these parties.
Ms. Ferrante?
And we are...
Go ahead, one more sentence. That's your time. What's wrong with Dr. Bichard?
She's unmuted. She can continue.
Next caller. Our time is up.
Hi, my name is Lukley Madar, 23 Bolins Avenue. I'm a junior at Wayne Valley High School. First of all, I'm so sorry, the board, the teachers, the administration, and the union have to listen to these disgusting remarks from parents. Cursing out the administration is not a healthy or appropriate way of communicating. Cursing out the administration is not a healthy or appropriate way of communicating. Is this really the example parents want to set for their kids? These parents are saying that they're here to represent their kids. Well, here's my opinion as a current Wayne School student. All of my friends have gone virtual. Why? Because it's safer, easier, and just as productive. Look, I understand virtual can be difficult for kids. But these parents aren't understanding that their teachers are just as human and they find it difficult too. They have family dying, yet they're expected to get right back to work. Their mental health is deteriorating, yet they have to listen to these insane parents insulting them. Their health and safety is at risk, yet they're still okay with going back to school for the benefit of their students. The teachers are not your enemy. The union is not here to hurt your kids. We all care. They all care. They all want to help us succeed. For the love of humanity, I'm just urging these parents to stop directing these hurtful words towards teachers. They're human. COVID is an incredibly hard time for all of us and parents must acknowledge that. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Hi there. Cindy Jaffe, 10 Sherwood Street. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to piggyback on the very brave seventh grader that called in and asked Dr. Toback, what specifically is being done or has been done since last March to improve the quality of the education that our children are currently receiving with a hybrid and/or virtual schedule? So that's my question. I want to first be sure to say thank you to any teachers that have gone above and beyond and are teaching our children under these challenging circumstances. I am not here to bash teachers. But the teachers that have gone above and beyond, in my opinion, are the minority. I also don't necessarily blame the majority who are failing our students because there's a very real possibility that they haven't been provided the tools or the education or accountability they need to ensure that they do right by our children. And I think that comes from our administration. Hybrid is not working. Virtual is not working. Besides the endless Google Meet technical glitches and the fact that very often the Google Meets end up not happening at all, when they do happen, they only include about five to 10 minutes total of teacher interaction or actual instruction per block schedule. I'm talking mostly at the high school level because that's all I have at this moment. So I don't, I cannot speak about middle school or elementary. There's more often than not little or no actual instruction. Most consists of attendance and an assignment posted. And then they have to do it independently. So the students are on their own for the bulk of the time block. Many times there's these ed puzzles which are assigned, which is basically a quick video that they watch and then they answer a couple of questions. And most of the time, my daughter is sitting there Googling videos on YouTube and teaching herself physics and whatever else she needs to know to actually do the assignment that, that the teacher asked them to do at the beginning of the Google Meet. So again, I just want to know what is being done to monitor the quality of teaching and set parameters of instruction that must and should be included with the hybrid and/or virtual schedule. And I don't think that has been discussed really at all. Thank you.
Give a stack of questions, Dr. Toback. Would you like to address some of them? Want to finish the queue? Okay. Next caller.
Hi, this is Lisa Sundell, 107 Maplewood Ave. I just wanted to say that not every parent feels the same way as the parent, a lot of the callers tonight. My son's been on virtual at Wayne Hill High School since September. And I really couldn't be happier. He's been doing fine and he's feeling safe. And I just wish the teachers could feel safe too. And I don't think that there are villains in this. They just want to keep safe. And I think sometimes we need to remember, even though it's been going on a year, we're still in a pandemic. It's not over. And there are new strains and it's perfectly understandable that they'd be nervous about coming back, especially without a vaccine. So I just wanted to let the teachers know that there are parents out there who appreciate all their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, Art Dardia, 87 Poplar Road. You know, I think as I'm, listening to the last few board meetings and some of the comments tonight, I think it's quite clear that not every parent feels the same way. Not every student feels the same way. You know, and I, I think it's hard for people to speak on behalf of others. But, you know, when I heard Dr. Toback talk today, he talked a little bit about how he's ultimately has to follow Executive Order 175 in the Governor's Directive in order to provide choice to parents in what instruction model should be there. And acting in the spirit of what that EO 175 sets down. So when I look at the NJEA's own website, there's a couple of things that I'm curious about. You know, it all mentions that they need to have procedures for full-time remote learning requests and scope and procedures for transitioning. You know, he, I think our current district has like a two-week notice in order to transition, which seems very flexible. And perhaps constrains us in when we do the hybrid model. So I'm wondering if moving to a more stricter commitment from parents on choice, maybe at a marking period level. So there is some flexibility about a full-year commitment would be a worthwhile endeavor. You know, at this point mid-year, you know, committing to that might be problematic, changing teachers, you know, reassigning students to classrooms. But for next year, in a world where maybe we don't go back five days a week, I do think that the district, you know, the board should ask the administration if there are changes they would make that allow for what some parents want, which is five days in the classroom. And what other ones want were to be remote. I think using permanent subs to handle some of those marking period changes where you'll get a teacher, but you may get a substitute. So that way you don't have to rebalance the classrooms constantly. I think people who need change, that change should come at a consequence because they want to make a change. So it does feel like tweaks could allow each people who call in to get more of what they want without it being, you know, trying to walk the dead middle of the road, which doesn't seem like anyone's really too happy about the situation. I'm also curious because on the NJEA's website, it mentions that at a minimum, there needs to be four hours of active instruction. I'm curious what the interpretation of the district is with respect to the word active there, because it does seem that they want to offer a lot of live instruction. But hearing, you know, from the previous callers, when they talk about, I only get five minutes of instruction, a lot of technical issues, some teachers just post videos.
That's your time.
It's very subjective.
Okay, thank you. That's your time. Next caller.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, my name is Lori Sharon. I live at 19 Abbott Road. I just wanted to call in. I'm a para at Wayne Valley and I just wanted to say on behalf of the teachers, I'm on the Google Meets all day, every day with my student in all of her classrooms. And the teachers are amazing and they're working their butts off and they do, they go above and beyond to help these kids. I, I just, you know, I think they're all heroes. And as far as, you know, every, all of us going back to work. You know, I, I grew up in, in Wayne. I've lived here my entire life. You know, and, and we're scared. But you know, we're essential workers. I have three kids now that have gone through all the Wayne's school systems. Two of them are still working remotely because their office buildings are not having them go back. One is going back in August and the other one's going back in September. My third child is going back, but she's a nurse and she's a COVID nurse. And it's scary and it's real. And it's already taken two staff members of our district. So I'm, I'm really voting for allowing the teachers, especially on the high school level, to stay virtual until we can all get the opportunity to be vaccinated. You know, it's, it's real. It's happening. We're losing people. And, you know, to send us back in this hybrid schedule, which is kind of crazy because you're, there's only 25% of the kids that are going to be physically in the classrooms anyway. 50% of the students are virtual. And then because you have the two cohorts, 25% of the kids are home. So the teachers in the classroom teaching to 25% of the kids that are there in person.
That's your time, ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for listening. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you very much. Hello? Next. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lauren Tuckman. I'm at Four Concord Place. I have two children in the district in elementary and in middle. I'm also a clinical social worker with firsthand experience treating mental health issues for children and families during this last year, as well as supervising school counselors in a neighboring school district. I appreciate the fact that we're living through a pandemic and that we're still adjusting. But I'm asking you to reconsider and expand the mental health services. Our children are suffering. And while much of the focus has been on academics and remote learning, I have evidence that the toll it takes on our children's mental health is even more significant. We are in crisis mode. And as a general finding, this chronic isolation is impacting all children regardless of their living situation. According to the American Psychological Association, seven out of every 10 children ages eight to 23 were most likely to report experiencing symptoms of depression. In November, the CDC showed a notable increase in children and adolescents requiring mental health-related hospitalizations. And the annual state of health in America reported preteens and teens had the highest rate of suicidal ideation compared to other age groups. That's why I have written to all of you. And as I've also reached out to my child's elementary principal requesting more support. Many children, especially in elementary schools, don't have the language to name or understand what they are feeling. Having the counselor do social emotional learning lessons and groups focused on managing expectations, self-compassion, and ways to cope with worry and stress, and doing it in groups and in class takes away the shame and stigma of receiving support. When I see what other districts are doing, I'm deeply disappointed in our district. More needs to be done here, especially at the elementary school level. This means going beyond a list of resources sent out to families without any sort of in-person process or guidance. Interaction with a school counselor is so critical, whereas waiting for parents in the midst of a pandemic to reach out for help is truly not acceptable. As part of my job, I see the positive impact the right type of systemic SEL programming has in other districts. And I really urge you to consider the same. So while I appreciate the challenges of opening schools, I remind you nothing is ideal. And without children being physically in school, there is a lost opportunity for teachers, nurses, and school counselors to serve as yet another set of eyes.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you.
Hi, Jenny Franklin, 21 Keylana Drive. I had a three-minute speech written, so I'm going to shorten it. My son Elliot is a member of the Wayne Valley class of 2021. I am overall proud of the way that he has handled this year, given all the disappointments that have bombarded these kids. But to date, he has been in school for nine days total. Truth be told, my son begged me not to call into this meeting tonight because, and I quote, "I don't want my teachers to hate me for wanting to go back to in-person school." The district has given up on our class anyway. What's the point? Today, my son represented our school district at the Special Olympics Capitol Hill Day, which you mentioned earlier, and spoke with congressional and senate leaders in Washington about the importance of unified education and sports. I've mentioned this to highlight the fact that my son is doing his part as an 18-year-old during his last five months in Wayne to make sure that he leaves this district better than when he arrived. His teachers have given him so much over the years and he wants to give back while he can. Despite everything that has gone on, he has not given up on all of you or on this district. Please don't give up on him or the rest of the class of 2021. They have suffered enough. They deserve to spend the next four months in school and finish this year as a group together. Not as lonely sad faces on a computer screen. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Haley Briso from Six Russell Terrace. I'm nine years old. Um, but I just feel like we need to go back to school. It's really not fair to us because no one's really listened to what we've had to say. But we just need to go back. I feel like I'm not doing as well as I used to with my schoolwork because it's just not the same and it's much harder. And it's not the same with education. And it's just not fair to us because no one's really like, listened to us. And I feel like people can stay hybrid if they really want to. Other kids need to go back to school because you cannot get the same education from being at home and staring at a computer all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. Can I get a mover to close public portion? Mr. Giordano?
Second.
This is Mr. Duffy. Dr. Toback, feel free to answer questions.
So I guess we're going back to and her question about surveying parents. Sure, we could, we could do surveys. We've done surveys. We actually have been using Thought Exchange to complete surveys about, you know, some different issues regarding to our return to school plan. We can certainly look to do another thought exchange to determine, you know, where people stand and maybe have some other ideas or some suggestions or there are some thoughts that represent the whole community. So as far as Mr. Tempesky goes, so the schedule that you have also reflects the fact that we go back to the prior schedule. Students are dismissed earlier, but that's because there is no lunch. Okay, so that's something that we can certainly review. But at this point, that, from what I gather, you're talking about the lunch period that goes away. So the instructional time remains the same, but the lunch period is not there. Can't hear me? Was I? Okay. So I guess Alan, I didn't catch your last name. He asked about March 1st, Wednesday. What does that mean? What that means is basically, to further clarify, that students would continue in school. There would be no virtual Wednesday. And so at that point, students would go to school five days a week on the same schedule they have and they've had a reduced day. So that's the general idea behind that. There would still be cohorts under that model. And so, as I mentioned with a prior caller, you would have, one group would go for three days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. The other group would go for two days, Thursday, Friday, and then you would switch the following week. Rose Cabanas. And the high schools, right. Okay, so and then as far as the high schools go, the schedules will be released. Oh, the middle schools, there's more coming out tomorrow regarding the FAQ. Okay. So on to Rose Cabanas. You asked some questions about, do teachers care about our kids? And you asserted that they do not care. So I'm not really, I, I certainly like to know more about the experience that you had that leads you to say something like that because it is a very sad state of affairs when a parent feels that their teachers do not care about their kids. My experience in the district is we have many fine and dedicated teachers that really do care about the students in the school district. And that's what sets aside this district from many others. There is a tremendous, in fact, many of the teachers we have are employees, are employees, are in many cases from Wayne. They attended our schools. They love our school system. So I would like to know more about the specifics about why you would say that or why you believe that any of the teachers have failed your, your youngest children. When it comes to planning and opening up in September, I don't know quite honestly that there's any district out there. I mean, you're, you're, you were speaking as if there are districts everywhere that have plans for September. Our plan would be to open for there are districts everywhere that have plans for September. Our plan would be to open for in-person instruction. But there's also a lot of things that we have to consider. So, so for example, if the State Department of Education has a specific plan for us, which they did this year, that would affect what we do. So like I said, I don't believe there's any school district out there that actually has a plan for next year. And if there is, I would certainly love to know more about that. And then the question was, if teachers have their kids in school, how do they, how do they think that makes us feel? Quite honestly, we know a number of teachers that, that, that are, they, they have school-aged children. And in some cases, depending on where they live, the kids haven't been to school for a very long time. We have employees here this evening that have children that have not been to school at all since March of last year. So I'm not really quite sure what that means, but I would like to know more. Okay. Mr. Resmer had a comment. Eda Frante had a comment. Laura Tuckman had a question about mental health services. So the only thing I would have to say about that, and this is really just a comment also from another student or another parent, that our counselors reach out all of the time. And so the idea that they don't reach out or that the parents have to go to counselors, I mean, if there is an issue, certainly as a parent, you should go to counselors. But I know our counselors do a lot of reach out based on different things they hear about. So I'm not sure where that comes from, to be honest. With Mrs. Jaffe's comments regarding what has been done since March of last year, well, the answer is a lot. And so a lot of that is actually on display on our website. So all the professional development opportunities, all the different educational resources that we have available, all of the different programs that we have in the district, all of that is digitized. And so it's available for review, including our curriculum, including the professional development. And also, we ran some PD sessions during the summer. Even during the summer months, we were working to help teachers prepare for what is certainly a non-traditional school year. We've also purchased a tremendous money, we've also expended a tremendous amount of money on educational technology because there were some issues. Although, quite honestly, I think most of them are repaired. And if there are issues where technology is not working or there's a regular situation where technology, you know, you have a drop need or something like that, that should be reported because we do have a help desk. We have, you know, we have a lot going on to support our parents when it comes to problems with technology. That was a comment. Mr. Dardia raised an issue about the governor's directive and what we do as a district. And a question about really tightening up the ability for parents to freely go from one instructional model to the other. So if you recall, the beginning of the year, that was something that parents were very happy about. The idea that they could have their children attend school, think about basically how things were going, assess what they felt was an appropriate level of risk. And if they felt that the risk of having their children in school was too high, then they were able to pull their children out. And so that was a very positive feature that many parents really enjoyed. And it's obviously not an easy thing to do as a school district to allow for that kind of flexibility. Could we make those standards a little tighter? The answer is yes, we could. Can you make it so someone's locked in probably for the remainder of the year? That would, that would be a tough thing to do. However, we can look at, and we have tightened up the ability for people to make a request to switch virtual, and then they can only do it at the beginning of each month. So that's our latest. So it has tightened up a little bit because it was a very, very difficult thing to do. We do have four hours of instruction based on the schedule that we have. And then going on to Lori Sherm. Okay, that was just a comment. Let me see if I have anything on the next page. Ms. Franklin, your son and what you talked about is an inspiration to everybody. And for a nine-year-old student who called in, we understand that you need to come back to school, and we look forward to seeing you next Tuesday.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Thank you, Dr. Toback, and thank you to everyone who called in this evening. We had some committees that met this evening. So we will ask for those reports. Mrs. Share.
Tonight, the tech committee met with myself, Ms. Dr. Burchard, Mr. Duffy, and Mr. Bubba. And we discussed some staffing needs update. We're going to, we're hiring a new tech trainer, which the interviews will be conducted next week. Obviously, one of our issues is that our vendors are kind of be behind because of the demand. So we're looking into next year on what we can do to order everything in advance to make sure that we get what we need. Chromebooks, the Chromebook order, we are going on a four-year cycle, which means the student will keep the Chromebook for four years, and then they're basically obsolete. The phone project is still going on. It's in three phases, and we were just finishing the first phase. And we will be given in the spring a new tech plan update, which will have goals and projects for the next three years. And that was it. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? I think we... Who else met this evening? Mrs. Puttup?
This evening, sorry. This evening, the finance committee met. Our administrators, Mr. Moffett, Ms. Lightig, myself, Mr. Pavlak, and Mrs. Kazan were in attendance. First, we went over the agenda items regarding finance that are part of this evening's agenda. We looked at the South Bergen Joint Cheer Commission Transportation Addendum. We looked to see if there were any budget transfers, but there were none for tonight. We looked at a 2021 budget update. We looked at revenues appropriations. We looked at our enterprise programs. And we looked at salary adjustments because we are looking at a larger number for long-term replacements and permanent substitutes. We looked at a preview of the 2122 programs. We questioned upcoming fees or tuition for preschool and extended day. Also for 2122 was a budget discussion update regarding our revenue projections. And we got a report from Mr. Moffett that he's just about done with the location budgets, which are submitted from each of our schools. We discussed cares, monies, and again, the number of meals that Sadekso, with a grant from the government, is providing each week for schoolchildren and outreach to other organizations. Thank you.
Keep forgetting unmute. Thank you, Mrs. Puttup. Anyone else have a report this evening? Okay, I guess that's everyone. Moving on to the agenda. May I get a mover for the?
Not a president.
Mr. Pavlak.
I would make a motion to move the agenda as one item.
Okay, can I get a second? Mrs. Share. Any discussion? On any of the agenda items?
If I could, ma'am president, for once I'm not the second for Mr. Pavlak's motion.
You're getting slow, Mr. Duffy. I'm sorry. Any, Mrs. Share.
Um, so I just wanted to comment on the new plan because you didn't ask for board members' comments before. I know, I know.
And here you have time.
Don't worry, I'll call out your mistake. What I want to say is that I am very happy that we will be going back to schools. I am someone that would like to see the children back in schools. I would also like us to consider, I know April nineteenth date, it's a proposed date. I'm assuming everybody's keeping an open mind that if things get better, we have no idea, that we will consider moving that forward. But I know that's totally up in the air. One thing I would like to discuss is the special ed situation. I am hearing more and more about services that are not happening. And I'm just asking, I don't know if, I'm not saying people are lying, but I don't know why or how it's happening that things are getting canceled or not being fit into schedules. So I just would like to ask administration if you could look into that and find out why. There are so many complaints about this right now. And once we go back in person, if we can push the in-person services, because I know things like OT are probably very difficult on a computer, so if we can push that. Two more, two more comments I wanted to make was that the one thing that I am upset about, which I have made abundantly clear to everyone, was the high school schedule came out and Cohort A will be beginning. And I don't understand why this has happened. Cohort C has missed more school than Cohort A and B. And it would have, I think it would have been fair to the students to start with Cohort C. I would like for you to, I personally have spoken with Dr. Toback about this, and I would like for you to look into it a little further and maybe add that to the list of questions on, I'm assuming that the people that met about it, there's some rationale. I'd like to know what it is. And just on this plan, I just, I'm asking the public, the union, the students, everybody to just understand that none of these are easy decisions. And you, there's no way you're going to please everybody in what's happening in the world. What I do ask, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but can we keep it clean and nice? I mean, we do have kids that are calling in and saying, why are people speaking like this? So I'm speaking to everybody involved. Just remember we're a community and try and keep it civil and nice. That's all I ask. Thank you, and thank you so much for the hard work. I appreciate it. And I can't wait to drive my daughter to school.
If you had been nicer to me, your C cohort would have went first. Anyone else? Mr. Bubba.
I just have a question about the, instead of alternating two days, three days, when we go back to the five-day schedule, have we thought at all about alternating weeks like we do in the high school? Like we're going to do, it's two cohorts there. I, I think that would be much easier to plan around, knowing that, and much more fluid instructional time to get a whole week sitting in the school. And then the following week being virtual, like we're doing in the high school. So I'm just curious if we had any thought about that.
Can I respond to this more?
Go ahead.
Okay, so Mr. Bubba, that was something that we, we looked at really at the start of the year during the summer, during the planning phase. You know, do you go, even if you have like a virtual Wednesday, if you get out of the virtual Wednesday and you, and you go with a full day of instruction and, you know, whatever, we just looked at a variety of different scenarios. Anyway, the point being that it does offer continuity. The problem is if you do have an outbreak with one of the cohorts, then you lose instructional time. So in other words, if you have Group A that's in school and they have an outbreak or some situation that breaks out on a Monday or a Tuesday, there's educational opportunity lost for the other cohort. So that's, that's kind of how it worked out and what we considered, that you would wind up perhaps being out of school for a number of days while the other group could have come in. And so that's why the flexibility and, and having the two cohorts in during the week. And the other part is the idea that obviously students would be out of school for a longer period of time. At this point, maybe we move beyond that, and we can certainly look at that suggestion. But I do, there was, there was a rationale behind it.
Anyone else? Any other discussion on the agenda? Well, I for one am happy with the reopening plan. I'm looking forward to seeing students back in the building and hopefully turning, to turning down the volume a little on the frustration level, which is no one's fault. Clearly, the pandemic wasn't created by us, and we are responding to it as best we can under the guidelines we're faced with. And we're just happy we're going to have students back in the building, and hopefully we can keep them there until the end of the year and, and build from, from that. So that's certainly the goal. Anyone else? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albany's?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Puttup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, well, now we'll move on to our second public portion. Same rules apply. Two minutes. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to two minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. You're free to call in again if you called earlier. That's not a problem in the second public portion. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Share.
Ma'am president, nobody at the podium, my motion is closed. I'm sorry, it's just a joke.
Well, it's not because I don't see a single hand raised. So that's a motion.
As you wish.
Can I get a second? I'm sorry? So it was Mr. Pavlak and Mrs. Share on the, on the fold agenda motion? Oh, on the opening of the second public portion? I don't even remember. Mr. Giordano and Mrs. Share? Okay. Well, now, you wasted all that time. We have a hand up. Go ahead. We have a caller.
Yes, hello?
Hello?
Yes, Thomas Coliff at Two Serlin Drive.
Can you turn off your radio?
I have a question because I have a family member living in Tortawa, and they have been open almost ninety-five percent of the time. But the question is to the whole team, can you explain the difference between Wayne and Tortawa? And how are they able to be in school ninety-nine percent of the time and we are not? Thank you.
Okay, we'll get back to you. Seeing no one else. Move to close?
I'll move.
Mr. Duffy? Mr. Giordano? What? Well, it took too long. Would you like to answer the caller's question, Dr. Toback?
Sure. Okay, so a number of people have brought up examples of different communities with different circumstances. And that's exactly the point. Different communities have different reasons why they might be able to stay open. But I would like to remind everybody that with regard to the Wayne Township Public Schools, first of all, we opened school when many school districts did not open. In other words, we started our school year on time. We continued throughout most of the fall. And so if Torto was open that whole time, that I can't say for sure. But the fact of the matter, matter is that we really did an exemplary job of remaining open until really in December, when the cases spiked. I don't think that we are very different than many other districts in the area. We've been very fortunate for the most part. I think that is different is that we wound up closing from that time period in January when we're supposed to return until, until February, but we're ready to open again. And I think we're in good position to do that. With regard to Torto, I will say this, that, you know, that some of the flexibility that exists in much smaller districts makes other things possible. So there was another caller that spoke about, or we had answered a question about Beckton Regional. Every, every community has a different set of circumstances. Perhaps Torto did not have the number of COVID cases that we had. Perhaps Torto didn't have the number of staff members who have medical needs that provide...
Perhaps Total didn't have the number of staff members who have medical needs that prevents them from coming to school. There's a lot of different factors that may have an effect. Perhaps Total, unlike Wayne Valley, Total probably did not experience an outbreak. We had two cases, two outbreaks at Wayne Valley, as defined by the New Jersey Department of Health. So in the end, every community is different. Every school system has a different set of facts. And like I said, for our part, we've been open most of the time. And, you know, we look to continue that in the spring.
Like Emily Latella, never mind. Old business? Good business?
Ma'am president, if I could, with new business. I would love to have had this conversation in the beginning of the meeting. However, I don't believe we have the audience that we had now that we would have had in the beginning of the meeting. That being said, these board members, and I believe I speak for all of us, we are not here, we are not paid positions. We are here on a a level that we want more for our children. That's why we're here. I know that these are troubling times, and once again, I say, I believe I speak for everybody. But we do want the best for our children. And no matter how many people call in and tell us, we want this, we want this, we are under mandates, whether it be the governor or numbers, whatever it is. But I do would like to think that the entire community knows that we are here for you, and we have your best interest in our hearts. And I believe I speak for every one of us. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Anyone else? Word comments? Anyone? Okay, well, seeing no one. Thank you all. Thank you to the administration for continuing to do an amazing job in the middle of a pandemic and rolling out yet another plan, answering everyone's questions, and doing our very best. If I can get a mover to close. Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Puttup. Meeting's adjourned. Got my gavel back. Night, Jeff.